Are we ready?
Yeah.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Just kind of getting ahead of myself.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call this meeting of Indigenous Penda School District 544 to order. But you want to establish a court, please?
Certainly. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knudsen.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Limkey.
Here.
Missy Hermes.
Present.
Stephen Vigessah.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Agenda passes. And then we have item number D, which I guess you get three, super gen Drake.
Thank you to the members of the Fergus Falls School Board for being strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Along with establishing policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system. Thank you for devoting your knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren.
Thank you. Moving on to item number E, we have a resolution on the acknowledgements.
I'd like to offer the following resolution and move for its adoption. Thank you to Megan Edgerly for her donation to the Otter Angel Account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals.
Do we have a second on that resolution?
One second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigessah?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to reports, our first report is going to be from Mindy Christensen and Josh Schornberg, talking about Rural Equity Summit. Welcome.
Thank you. Alright, thanks for having us. We were asked to just kind of give you a recap on the Rural Equity Summit that we attended on Martin Luther King Jr. Day. So, there were about over 150 people there. And there were lots of community leaders, citizens, groups from various organizations. Some of them had to take the day off from the county in lieu of like another day off later. And some people from Mojave Atwa got to use it as part of their paid time. So all in all, like I think it was about 174 people.
So we had a chance to hear from many speakers. I think the one that's probably most familiar to each of you is Keith Ellison, the Attorney General of our state. And so anyways, he had a really powerful speech. Just reminding us of the importance of racialized thinking. I know Fergus Falls is still quite white, even though I see diversity in skin and whatnot growing. But racialized thinking hurts, and that's what he wanted to point out to us. And not just talking about people of color, you know, black or brown skin, but also white people. He mentioned to us that white men with autophoma have the highest morbidity rates. You know, suicide is really big with white men. And that's really important to notice.
Yeah, and he mentioned a book I mentioned at the end that talks a lot about that racialized thinking, how like it affects how people vote on public policy and stuff like that, and actually voting against their own self-interests. So one thing that he talked about was the 100 year anniversary of the Lynchings in Duluth. And there's going to be a big commemoration of that in June where Bryan Stevenson will be speaking. He wrote Just Mercy, which the film just came out with an adaptation. It's going to be a big event.
I think, oh, I could go back with one more bullet point on there is, I think one thing that came out from the day overall with all the speakers, especially Mr. Ellison, is the idea of dignity and respect. The word justice is used quite a bit throughout this. And I think most people think of justice as in the court of law, you know, punishment, you know, you break the law and jail time and whatever else it might be. But we're talking justice where we're talking the kind where everyone gets to live a life of flourishing, to be whole. And key words for that is being able to live with full human dignity and respect.
There were a couple of visual note takers there that were hired there. And so I'll see those after each piece. So that was a really cool part of it. And those are going to be traveling to each of the agencies that help sponsor the events. You might see them around town. Next, we had North Dakota State Representative Ruth Buffalo speak. And she spoke a lot about the crisis of missing and murdered Indigenous women and how disproportionate that is to other races and ethnicities of people who have gone missing. And added men in there as well and transgender people talking about that crisis. And that was really eye opening. And also just talked about like, once you know these things, you know what's going on, it's important to act on them instead of just simply acknowledging that they're there. Like you can't just say, oh, I'm sorry, that's happening, but what are you going to do about it?
So there was a panel discussion. That was interesting. So what happened was we get these folks, these experts on racial issues up on stage, and the audience was able to write down questions to ask them. And the questions were passed up to the front of the stage where a moderator was able to ask some of those questions to the panel. And so a couple of quotes that came out of that is create belonging instead of other than, you know, kind of the idea of togetherness. The second one, you can read that too, the systems aren't broken, the systems are doing exactly what they're meant to do. And so a lot of things that we consider good for ourselves might be really, really difficult on somebody who is of color or that kind of thing. In any case, I think the idea from this was to work to change systems that keep people in oppression. And I'm not sure if you had anything to add to that?
Then we had Kasim Abdurazak speak. And he's been to M State a couple of times. He had a really good rapport with the students. He has played with the football team and the basketball team and worked with them and talked to all the students. And so he talked a little bit about, talking a little bit about justice and discomfort and how you have to get a little bit uncomfortable in order to tackle injustice. And talked about creating meaningful relationships with people because if you don't do that, there's a lot of fear, right, involved in, once you know people, you don't have to be fearful of them. And then we had a workshop from Maggie Baumgartner at the end. And she talked, and it was like a grad class level talk in critical race theory. So I won't go into all of that with you, but she talked a lot about ACEs and epigenetics and how trauma is inherited up to like seven generations, according to science. And how we're actually wired because of our epigenetics to not have or show empathy. And that's something that we have to work on as humans to interrupt that threat cycle. And again, there'll be a book that you can read if you would like to. And she talked about the axis of oppression and intersectionality. And so, you know, you may be, for example, you may be privileged in one area, but you may be oppressed in another area. And so you can be in many different places at the same time. And so intersectionality is becoming to be like a more commonly known thing, but she talked a lot about that. And then at night, there was an Equity and Faith Panel with Prairie Rose Seminole. She's the ELCA's Director of American Indian and Alaska Native Ministry. So she travels all around the nation, talking, as is Reverend Curtis DeYoung from the Minnesota Council of Churches. And so one thing that I thought was really interesting that I thought they talked about was toxic benevolence. And so that's like when you're trying to do something good, but it's actually not helpful. So they talked about sometimes like mission trips, not to like, not picking on any one mission trip, but talked about like mission trips. For example, there's a Native American reservation down south that people have visited and they'll paint the same wall four times in one summer because they just need something for groups to do. And so the key there is to find out what that community actually needs and what they want people to do in order to most benefit them. And sometimes it's not going to be, you know, take everybody down there and spend all that money on traveling. Sometimes it's going to be providing funds for something. These are the books that they mentioned during the day. Stamped From the Beginning is a very large book, but it's really like covers the whole history of racism in the United States, like since its inception, which is really interesting. This is the book that Keith Ellison mentioned, Dying of Whiteness, How the Politics of Racial Resentment Is Killing America's Heartland. And it's from a physician and talks about how policies have consequences for white people that are voting for them. Rising Out of Hatred, The Awakening of a Former White Nationalist. And then My Grandmother's Hands, this is the one that was talking about working through that, kind of like learning how to regulate yourself and when you feel fearful of something, like how you can, why that is and how you can regulate yourself.
Where does that leave us? So there's a ton of opportunities here for us. So we've got some committees, I think committees on them. I've not been part of any yet. You're part of one as well.
I am.
We're probably the same ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just a handful of committees that are listed, offered here. Starting in March here, there'll be a social justice book club that will be held at the library. And, yep, so, yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee meets here at school about four times a year. Nancy's on that with me, and anyone else is welcome to join us. The support work group is for anybody in Otter Tail County. And March 2nd is our next meeting with Dr. Anton Schroyer, who's an expert on Native Americans and talking about historical trauma in that section. And then he said the Social Justice Book Club is just starting. The first one is like 12 Acts to a More Compassionate Life. And in May, my intercultural communication class is going to be leading the discussion. The book is called Stamped: Racism, Anti-Racism, and You. It's a lighter version of the Stamped From the Beginning book. It's like more of a young readers edition, but it's much more accessible. And then our Community of Practice meets monthly in our next meetings. And you wrote the last one?
Yeah, so one of the things that Mr. Vazak brought up was the idea of ZPD is on a proximal development. And he asked the question, what is in my reach to do? And we can do all these things, right? Read books all we want, but probably one of the best things we can do is make meaningful relationships with people. Make friendships. You know, get to the point where you're listening and sharing concerns with each other. Get to the point where when you're looking at them, you're not just looking at race or whatever it might be, but you're actually seeing their humanity. Say things, you're able to say things that need to be said. You can talk about the uncomfortable topics. And then just the idea of how human interaction makes it safe for people to be able to talk about, you know, things that need to be talked about, the things that make us uncomfortable.
And since it was like, the whole point of it was kind of next steps, we came up with these. And again, not to assume that any of you haven't done any or all of these things, but one thing that some of us have done is taken the intercultural developmental inventory. I know Jeff's taken it, Missy, I don't know about anyone else. But it's been really useful in finding out how as a group and as an individual, where you are in being able to communicate with other cultures. And it's a continuum. And then they also gave you steps for how to move further into the continuum. And I found it personally to be a really helpful tool. Another thing that we love to do, and again, I'm sure that you've already started this work, but looking at the district data for inequities, I know that's one of your main goals, is to make sure that we erase inequity in education. And so looking at, you know, who's failing classes and who's not, but not just that, but who has Ds and who's not, who's going to ISS or OSS and who's not, and looking at those against our actual like statistical data, like we erase ethnicity, income, and such. And also working on hiring more diverse staff. And I think we all know that that's an issue, but to have a staff that more accurately reflects our student population, I think would be really ideal, not just for our students of color, but for our white students too.
Going back to the second, the last one, not only with grades and that kind of stuff too, but I would add just being able to participate in activities. You know, whether it's a play or a sport or, you know, just being able to buy a yearbook or, you know, just being able to recognize which groups of people might not have access to those things or might not feel comfortable joining those things for whatever reason.
I would say one other thing we can do is attend this conference. Is this every year?
This was the first one, and I know there will be another one. I don't know if it will be next year or if it will be biannual, but can certainly keep you updated on future plans.
Because at the conference, there's CEOs, there are people that were in leadership, the big companies. And, you know, that's something I think the school board, anybody, any or all of us should be attending too. Because that is a focus of something that we want to be doing, is to reduce that equity gap. You know, whether it's with, you know, giving everybody a Chromebook or just, you know, getting rid of those barriers. It's really important to know just how bad it is. If you don't know what the problem is, how to fix it. And so I really appreciate you guys bringing this to us.
I'm speaking to that and what you were saying, you know, I think a lot of talk is around the achievement gap, you know, trying to lower the achievement gap. But what I've learned recently is that it's much more helpful to look at it as an opportunity gap.
Right.
Right? And who has opportunities and who doesn't, and why is that?
Well, and I love the point you made about who's not doing football or volleyball or buying a yearbook just because of, you know, money when, you know, in a perfect world, all of us get to do that. And I guess we just, it's not a perfect world, so we have to figure out how do we make that fair for, you know, for everybody in the district and all the parties involved, so.
Again, just how you make a kid or, you know, an adult just be able to feel like they're whole and actually part of it.
Very cool. Other comments or questions for the board? Thank you guys for sharing.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next report, we have Kirby Anderson, 544 Education Foundation and Finance.
Yes. Nothing too far on finance, but on the 544 Foundation, our regular scheduled meeting is this week, it's Thursday. And I think one of the highlights is going to be, I think I've mentioned it at past meetings, that we did receive $110,000 from former students as part of her estate. And so now the board has gone through and they're recommending that we spend about half of that money. And so they're going through and fund some projects that didn't make the cuts for because they really don't have money. So we're looking at some macro books for an English classroom, $10,000, a computer lab at Cleveland, $16,500, six iPad minis for kindergarten classrooms, 60 total, so $19,000. Twenty Chromebooks for the ALC for $4,600. And so there's just a sampling of what we're looking at. And so that's, hopefully that's, I don't know if we've kept half of that money. And what they did is they looked at this person who got this money from in her estate, and they looked at her interests and tried to match up the gifts that were, they were doing and to match up with what her interests were when she was, when she was here and then in her adulthood as well.
Have they said her name yet?
It's Karen Mattson, M-A-T-T-E-S-O-R, yes. So that's all I have for those reports.
Any questions for Kirby? Thank you, Kirby. Melanie Cole, Special Ed Co-op, Region 1 and Activities.
Activities has not met. Region 1, the Technology Support Group based out of Moorhead didn't have anything extraordinary. A lot of talk about gearing up for the conference and then just regular staffing issues and development of programs. So nothing, just the average there. Today, we had a special education cooperative meeting. One of the highlights for me was that the director, Shannon Erickson, spoke about the Autism Spectrum Disorder, which has now been put into the realm of special education just this past year. And she indicated that we have about 90 students throughout the cooperative that have been identified with Autism Spectrum Disorder.
Somewhere on the spectrum.
Somewhere on the spectrum, some of them pretty debilitated by it. And so we have currently one staff in our school building that is qualified to work with autistic students and then a co-op employee. But the numbers are showing that perhaps we should have more staff. And so that is an initiative that she's going to research more fully and bring back to the board. But it, yeah, it's just kind of emerging, the more it's identified, then the better services we can provide. So that was the primary objective today, and then personnel and all that. So that's all I have for my reports.
Any questions for Melanie? On the Optimism one, did they talk about how much is increased over the?
You know, it was recently required that it be quantified.
Okay.
So up to, until, I think it was last year or two years ago. Another interesting note was that about half of the identified students are in the Fergus Falls district. And the rest then are sprinkled throughout the rest of the special ed cooperative area.
Sure, okay.
And do you know the building that the one person that we have that's qualified? We know what, because we know that the younger the students receive those services, the better off they are, are they?
Yes, so the staff person that we have is in Adams Elementary.
Okay.
And she's well qualified. But then the cooperative will supply, you know, that staff person, although she's just working 20% of a full-time position. So that's, yeah, yeah. And with the identified goal of establishing services, but, you know, her role isn't to be a one-on-one provider, so, yeah.
Any other questions for Melanie? Thank you, Melanie. Missy Hermes, Staff Development and Critical Review.
Well, I'm going to let Steve report on Critical Review. I'm going to report on staff development though. And we met on Monday, February 3rd, and so last week. And one of the biggest things we talked about was the upcoming March 27th in-service. And some of that had to be changed because the February in-service day, we, teachers needed to go home early because of the weather. And that was the day, which is unfortunate because there was a lot of planning that went into having the cultural competency training with Troy Haugen. And Troy Haugen was mentioned in that last presentation by Mindy and Josh. But so that's really important that we have that cultural competency training. And so that is going to take place that day. And in addition to that, then there will be some other workshops. And one of the things that we really talked about also is the follow-up session on Envoy. And so thinking about a couple of years ago, when we first had teachers recommend Envoy, that they had gone through that process, and then we offered that and we really encouraged it. Now we've had a lot of new teachers that don't have that Envoy training, which is supposed to be quite helpful in classroom management. So there'll be an Envoy follow-up session. There's going to be some literacy and reading preparation. And, but also some of the other things that they talked about offering are, let's see, suicide prevention, some Diane Hecox, we talked about her. Remember she was the one that did that in-service in the fall on differentiated instruction? And then Thrive. Thrive. And then Mental Health First Aid. So all of those things, that is what we talked about. We're not the budget for that, for individual staff to go to different things. That's, we'll be renewing that in June probably, but right now that budget is spent. Which is great.
Which is good.
Means people are going to things, new skills, et cetera.
Any questions for Missy? Thank you, Missy. Natalie Knudsen is not here, so.
Did you want me to do the quick one? Or do you want?
Yeah, why don't you?
Oh, because she was supposed to.
Don't worry, Steve, I'm going to get to you. I'm going to get to you, don't worry. We're just going to bump you over there. I'll make sure it's written next agenda meeting. I did it now. And then under my report, Lakes Country Service Co-op Board, we do not meet until this Thursday. Just going to mention that it is an open house today for Lakes Country Academy, a Level 4 facility. I got to turn it up this afternoon, and it's a very nice facility and set up, it was well planned. It's always good not to be the initial person, so you learn from other people. It's maybe hindsight is 20/20 sometimes, and they learn some things that this facility is set up to, well done. It's a very simple building, it's a good flow, and it was nice to see, very nice. Minnesota High School League, they did meet February 4th. And I just want to give an update a little bit on some of the work they've been doing. They've been working on some technology updates that they've talked about. And at this point in time, they are looking to hire potentially a third party to provide some enhanced technology programs for them. And so they're going through that. So that's where they're at with the technology part of it. Girls tennis, and this has been a long thing that's been going on, but the activity advisory proposal to add a third class failed for a lack to receive a motion for approval and therefore was denied. So there will not be a third class for tennis, for girls tennis for whatever reason. So that hasn't happened yet, so. So that's kind of an interesting one. And then, again, working through the financial struggles of Minnesota High School League, they are going to be increasing the member fees. The Board of Directors approved a $40 increase to membership fees and activity registration fees and a dollar student enrollment fee per school using the Minnesota High School Enrollment Data effective with the 2021, 2020, oh, 2020-2021 school year. So again, as we've talked about before, they're going to pass that to their members to pay for it, so. So that's kind of what they're going to be working towards. So that's part of their, again, working through their budget issues. And then, let me see here. The other thing is, and I don't know if Eric Abrams is there today, he might be for the Inside Out. They're hosting, the board members were reminded of the Inside Out Educational Leadership Forum. It's happening today down in Minneapolis, so I'll have to attend it too today. So that is what I have to report on my two, any questions?
Can I ask just a question to clarify?
Yes.
Did you say it was a dollar per student per activity that they're adding on for the fee?
So it says a dollar student enrollment fee per school. So when I take the numbers of enrollment, so Minnesota High School League, so however many numbers we have for students wise, I think that'd be 10 through 12, if I remember right. They're going to add on a dollar additional fee that will be built for.
Whether a student participates in activity or not?
Correct, correct. That is correct. I'll work through it, so. But yes, so that was their, again, part of their, trying to deal with their deficit, so.
Thanks.
Yeah. Steve Vigessah, Legislative Liaison, Meet and Confer. No, that's right, we switched it, right?
No, you're still doing. I'm still on Meet and Confer.
Okay, but you just add it, Quick and Review, alright.
Yes.
And Quick and Review.
Yes.
So Meet and Confer, we'll meet and confer this week on Wednesday. So I'll have more to report next month on that one. Legislative, nothing is super pressing in the legislature right now, but I did want to give a nod over to Bud Nornes last month announced that he'd be retiring, not running for reelection. Bud was actually a school board member from 1983 to 96. Were you guys, you guys weren't on the board when he was?
No.
I wasn't even born yet.
96, I was a big job. Okay. Yikes, this is unpopular. Alright, just insulting my fellow board members. Wonderful, good job, Steve. Anyways, so, you know, Bud was actually a pretty big advocate for education. One of the big things that he did was he helped One of the big things that he did was, he helped, along with Lakes Country Service Club, he's not taking credit, but he was part, he partnered with Lakes Country Service Co-op and helped pilot programs where kids could take some college courses in the high schools if the teacher did not have a master's degree. So they partnered with the college, like a college instructor that had a master's in order to get that into the schools, which he helped secure funding for, and that's why some of this is happening. It's a pretty significant program, and it's helped a lot of kids get some college credit without a lot of cost to themselves or the district. And, you know, he was big into making sure that we hired diverse teachers and recruiting teachers. And a lot of his work was on the, was on higher education. But like I said, I just wanted to give a shout out to Bud. He was a, he was a pretty big advocate for education. And, and I think he's been in the legislature for like 24 years, so. That was, that's pretty much it for the legislative. In regards to curriculum, the curriculum meeting committee met, there's, now there's two, there's two curriculum committees now. One is the regular curriculum review committee, and the other one is a curriculum review committee that was, that comes out of our strategic plan. And that second group is more along, along the lines of creating a vision for how we decide what curriculum to purchase and develop in our schools. And just, I know the school board knows these questions, because, you know, we kind of came up with them, but for the public's benefit, the driving, the driving mission for that curriculum review is what knowledge and skills and abilities and characteristics are necessary to prepare students for challenges in the 21st century. And curriculum is really important in preparing kids for life outside of these walls. And so just really quickly, the criteria, the things that we're, we're going to start questioning in our curriculum and, or working through this, I guess, is, you know, is our curriculum aligned to state standards, is it aligned to ACT standards, do we adopt curriculum for social, emotional learning? How do we ensure that all students are challenged academically? How do we, do we need to adopt specific curriculum to meet the needs of our gifted and talented students? And then what courses would benefit our students that we currently do not offer? And I unfortunately missed the first meeting, I just got this binder tonight of what, of what they went over. But really, it's more of a, it's more kind of like a think tank in a way that will present recommendations to the curriculum review, which will present recommendations to us. So that's, that's an exciting meeting, I'll have more report on that next month. The, the regular curriculum review committee, we had presentations from the language arts department, which they're currently reviewing curriculum for 2020, but they're waiting on some education standard, another revision of the education standards in February, because we don't want to spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on a curriculum that doesn't meet our standards. The, you know, throughout all of these reports, we had social studies and language arts, but every person that presented wanted more technology, you know, for kids to use. They see the benefit of using it. And when they review their curriculum, they're looking to see how does it evolve as they, as they teach with current, you know, like social studies, for example, current events being updated, and how can they push some of this material out to kids? How can they use it in the classroom? Because, I mean, this Generation Z, that's what they want. They want something, they want something that they can manipulate that has a screen, you know, so that they can, it just helps them learn better. The, let's see here, the one thing that they, that they did, which I found was an interesting point, was Manager Malar presented, in ninth, talking a little bit about the relevancy of the accelerated reader program for older kids, like in ninth grade, is, is it really working? And for those who don't know, accelerated reader is a, is a program that's used heavily in elementary schools, where kids are encouraged to read books, then they take a test on that book to determine if they know what it said. They get points for it, and it kind of becomes a bit of a contest, and it's, it's fun, it's good. I mean, it gets the kids reading and stuff. In ninth grade, it's not as big of a deal, for some reason. And they're looking at alternatives like book journaling, kind of almost like a book club, where you read a certain book and you discuss it in class, to really, you know, get a meaning out of that versus, you know, it's like they don't care as much about points in high school as they did in, you know, fifth, sixth grade, so. Which I think is great, I think it's a great thing to always look at the things that we've been doing forever, and is there, are there better, is it working, and are there better ways to do it? They also talked a little bit about how they integrate digital citizenship, is what they call it. You know, how, how are you presenting yourself online, you know, Facebook, Twitter, Snapchat, whatever it might be, and, and just making sure that that is intertwined in all the curriculum of how, of how kids, you know, just so they understand, when something's out there, it's out there forever. You know, in lieu of putting a, just a class out of like, how do you, oh, on top of that, it was not just about that, but it was also about, how do you, how do you fact check things that you hear? You know, and that's a really, really great thing. So like, when they're having a kid do a research project, it's, these are, these are some ways that you can check different sources that are either unbiased, that are true, you know? And I think that's a very good skill to have, even as an adult. You know, when you see something on Facebook and it says something crazy, and you're like, wow, it's, you know, how do you, how do you fact check that? And some people just don't know how to do it, so. So that was kind of a cool, that was kind of a cool thing about it as well. Let's see here, the, it's kind of the same story for, for the social studies and geography. They like the curriculum, they're constantly, you know, supplementing their own lessons with, with technology. They talked a little bit about the trip for, the trip that's coming up, that go, for social studies to go to the Capitol. And they said they have 64 kids signed up, which is double of last year. So it's a, it's a pretty cool trip that they're going on, it's very packed, you know, three days in the Capitol, but every minute is planned, and they hit pretty much all the highlights. And, you know, it's just a civics lesson, is what it is.
It's the national Capitol, right?
Yes, DC, yeah, yeah. And so, yeah, and let's see here. The ALC, Judah got up and talked about the ALC, the things that are offered in the ALC for the, for social studies, and there's a bunch of different offerings, which is great. And they're actually planning a Europe trip in 2021, which is kind of cool. And they've already got about 20 kids signed up so far for that, so. Just helping them, helping all the kids, the ones in the trip to DC and here, just figuring out, because they all are on their own for fundraising, so, you know, there's, you know, they know about it enough in advance, so they, kids just find a way, it's great. But that's about it for my, my report, there's a lot, there's a lot going on there.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Superintendent Drake?
All right, good evening. First, I would like to just publicly thank the Blandon Foundation for sponsoring the leadership training. I had the honor of attending with a cohort of 24 other civic-minded individuals from around the community. Fantastic group of people, really enjoyed the opportunity to make connections with them. I thought in retrospect, that one week at Blandon's probably would have taken me two years just if I were in the community, making those connections and building those relationships. So really, really pleased. And the, the community's in great hands, there are a lot of very talented and passionate people with the goal of making Fergus Falls be everything that it can possibly be. We had very, very good trainers, the content was excellent, and of course, the lodge was very accommodating hosts as well. And I also wanted to thank Forward Fergus Falls for sponsoring the bus to take us there. All but about three of us rode the, rode the bus there and back, which is other opportunity to develop those social relationships, so. Again, just a fantastic week and experience, and would strongly encourage everyone else to apply the next time that this is offered, because it's well worth it. The strategic planning committees are basically all rolling, with the exception of facilities, which will be a good month away still. And the one that has an upcoming meeting, their first meeting this week will be Student Climate and Culture. That meets this Thursday at 7:00 AM, right in this room here. I had my first meeting with MREA in my orientation, that was last week. I was gone part of a day Tuesday and then Wednesday morning. We talked about the upcoming legislative session, the proposed amendment to the Minnesota Constitution, which gathered, has garnered a lot of conversation. Talked about the 35th anniversary of MREA, so the organization has some history now in the state, and the replacement plans in process for the retiring executive director, Fred Nolan. So that's coming up. We will interview candidates in early March, and then Fred will plan to step down at the end of June from his duties there. And then, it's a busy time of the school year, we're gearing up for state playoffs potentially, certainly playoffs leading up to the state coming up. March is a special month to appreciate music, so we will have a lot of concerts and opportunities to listen to the talented students and the directors with many public performances. And now is the time of the year when I think most of us are looking forward to spring. Gets to be kind of challenging, because students have been, you know, kind of cooped up with each other for a long time, so you do, on the discipline side, start to see a few more behaviors come to the surface. So we deal with some of those things as well. But by all accounts, we are having a great school year. The reports that I get is that things have been going well and people are pleased. Excited about the results of the strategic planning that will become clear here in a couple of more weeks. And then, as I listened to the presentation today, there's one other resource that I think people would find interesting, it's a book, it's called Blind Spot. And it addresses implicit bias, or the biases that we have towards things that we're not even aware of. And it's an excellent read, a pretty quick book, but it does point out some things that would be helpful for probably all of us to be aware of as we work with people and try to be welcoming and understanding. With that, I would field any questions, if there are any from the board?
Any questions from the board?
I think Jesse Thorsted was with you at Blandon, too, so.
Jesse was with me, yes.
Yeah, you were the only two from the school district, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Superintendent. All right, moving on to our general consent items, we have events for the January 27th, 2020 board meeting. Bills and treasuries report.
Yes, Missy and I sat down with Blake before the meeting, and we went through the bills. We had some security cameras, I think $3,000, we had the security cameras, I think those were, we talked about that, I think they were probably over at McKinley, if I, we talked about that a lot.
Adams.
I'm sorry, Adams, yeah. And then we had Cleveland computers, $29,000, the computers that we bought for testing over there, so that bill came through. We worked as a pass-through for the 544, where they gave us some money for the weight room. There was like $4,000 worth of equipment that, that went to, for the weight room updates. There's quite a bit of electrical work, in the $7,000 to $10,000 range, and a lot of, most of it over in Roosevelt and Vocation Light, where we're updating LED lighting. And so we're looking to get a rebate back from Power Job Power on that, and also we'll see lower energy bills in the future on that one. We had some, the resurfacing of the gymnasiums was completed, I believe, and we paid for that. Gymnasiums at Kennedy and Cleveland were resurfaced. And that was all for the highlights. The, as far as the treasuries report, we had a beginning balance of right around $8 million, and our incoming receipts and our outgoing were very close, so we are still sitting at about $7.8 million, so. We are in a good financial shape right now, and thank you to Blake for putting it together for us and keeping an eye on things, so appreciate that.
Any questions? Thank you, Carrie.
Yes.
Personnel, Elaine Jenkins.
We have a few items again during this meeting that I would ask the group before. Certified Staff Overload Contract, Jen Russe, Bax Teacher at ALC, and it would be just for this one semester, second semester, I should say, one class. Support Staff Retirement, Heidi Schaefer, Cafeteria Food Service Staff at KSS. And there will be a resolution later on in the agenda regarding her retirement. And then a support staff hire, Evan Hart Custodian at KSS, effective 2/18/2020. And there is actually one more, that if you go up here, I think my agenda got printed before.
Can I see?
Yes, and that's Jody Johnson, reassignment to server cook position, which is an eight-hour day, and that is the position that Heidi had left due to her retirement. And Jody is going to be moving into that, and therefore then we're going to open up, we're having a shifting going on, so I would recommend all those for approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the general consent items as presented?
So?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those, the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? General consent items pass. We have no old business, moving on to new business, we have an additional part-time, 22.5 hours a week, special education, paraprofessional position at Heritage Building. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So?
Do we have a second?
No second.
Any discussion on that? All those, the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, item passes. Item number two is a resolution on retirement of Heidi Schaefer, whereas Heidi Schaefer began her employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in January of 1999. And whereas Heidi has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past 20 years, and whereas Heidi has done an excellent job in our food service department throughout the district, and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Heidi Schaefer for her 20 years of dedicated service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will somebody offer that resolution, move towards adoption?
I'll offer the resolution, move towards adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limpke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Item number three is the 2019-2020 Fergus Falls Public Schools Mission, Values, Motto, and Belief Statement. Kirby Anderson is going to do that for us.
Yes, do you want me to say that I'll make a motion that we approve the following mission values, motto, and belief statements? Our mission, the mission of the Fergus Falls Public Schools is to prepare productive and engaged members of the society by creating an environment where all students reach their full potential. Our values are integrity, respect, empathy, responsibility, commitment, enthusiasm, persistence, resilience, innovation, and creativity. Our motto is committed to excellence, and our belief statements, one through eight. Number one, we believe in a safe, supportive, and respectful environment. Number two, we believe in being committed to every student's emotional, social, and academic success and well-being. These conditions develop compassionate and curious minds. Number three, we believe in providing students with challenging opportunities to reach their full potential as confident and responsible thinkers, problem solvers, and decision-makers. Number four, we believe involvement in meaningful activities enriches a person's life. Number five, we believe we are stewards of our community's resources and will offer efficient and effective learning spaces for students. Number six, we believe in creating an environment where staff are engaged and valued. Number seven, we believe in open communication among students, staff, families, and in cultivating strong community partnerships. And number eight, we believe learning is an active and lifelong process.
Do we have a second on that motion?
No second.
Any discussion? I think just through the process of stepping, going through this, one of the things that I kind of look back here is, is an article I had read, it just talked about institutional cultures or school cultures, and that our beliefs, our hope is our beliefs and what we believe in, will, which will in turn guide their behavior. we believe in, will, which will in turn guide their behavior.
Yes.
And hopefully those beliefs will, will come and form our behaviors and, and good things will happen in our district. So with that, all those in agreement with the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Following this, we will be in a work session to talk about our slogan, Otter's Drive, update on Lincoln School, school policies and practices, health support, and school buildings. And then our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, February 24th, 5:15 PM, right here at the Otter Community Room at Kennedy Secondary School. With that, will somebody offer that motion to adjourn?
So.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.